I'd like to call the City of Marine City Virtual City Commission Meeting is called to order on Thursday, December 17th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Claussen.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Commissioner Ross. Mayor Verkaman.
Here.
City Manager Levin.
Here.
And we need to approve the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call vote, please.
Wait, wait, wait. I got a question. Lisa Hendrick, I'd like to move 7H and 7I to 11H and 11I. Those are the two retirement system actuarials in the consent agenda.
You want to move H and I to where?
11.
Oh, to 11. Okay, got it. H and I. Okay. Thank you.
Do we need?
I need a motion to amend that, then.
Okay, I make a motion. I'm going to amend my motion for the consent agenda to move items 7H and 7I to 11.
This is Jake, support.
Okay, now can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now's the time for public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the city commission. Please state your name and limit your comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond, but we will follow up if necessary. Any public comments? Okay, we're moving on to approve the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve city commission meeting minutes as of or for November 19th, 2020?
I make a motion to, this is Commissioner Ross, I make a motion to approve the minutes as distributed in our packets.
Support Jake.
Any discussion or changes for the minutes?
Just to comment, this is Lisa Hendrick. I'd just like to make a comment. I'm voting no to these meeting minutes. These meetings are for the public and have been sanitized to eliminate specific information. I would like this statement entered into the minutes. Thank you. That's it.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm sorry, that was a, should have been a no. Commissioner Callahan.
Um, yes.
Commissioner Claussen. Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the following items. Do I have to do these individually?
Read them out for the public.
Okay.
No, you do them as a group. Do them as a group.
But I have to say them individually, though, correct? So we know what we're?
You don't have to. You can just move the consent agenda.
So, hang on a second. So the commen, so we need on the consent agenda with the following items, except for the retirement system and the retirement system report, right? Which was moved.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, letters A through G.
Bill Claussen, support.
Okay, I need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross. Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we have financial business. I need a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll, for $698,677.24.
This is Commissioner Callahan. I make a motion that we approve finance, our expenditures, including payroll for $698,677.24.
Jake, support.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have a quick question. It's not about this, though, but it is about us on our roll call votes. Were we supposed to be saying where we are and things like that? Wasn't it the last meeting we had to say we were like in Marine City, Michigan, or St. Clair County, or something like that?
That's right.
Only on the first roll, only on the first roll call. You can do it, you can do it at any time now.
Okay.
Commissioner Claussen.
Uh, yeah.
Do you want to say where you are right now?
I'm in Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross.
Yes, at my home in Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes, I'm in Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes, I'm in Marine City, the County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes, I'm in Marine City, the County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes, I'm in Marine City, County of St. Clair.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're moving on to unfinished business. We have city commission appointment and some other appointments, board appointments. What we're doing tonight is an interview, a short interview with each of the candidates. Can I just ask that each of the candidates let us know that you're listening? So going in alphabetical order, John Kreidler, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
And Craig McKenzie, are you with us?
Yes, Mayor, I am.
And Ray Melli, are you with us? Ray Melli, are you with us?
I know he is on the line. It looks like he's experiencing some problems with his audio.
Yeah, I saw him on here earlier. There he is.
Ray Melli, are you with us? Well, we're going to, we're going to continue on. I feel bad that Ray can't talk to us because that was all part of the interview process. Hopefully by the time we get, maybe he can just go last. John or Craig, do either of you want to go first? We're just going to ask you a couple of questions.
I'd be happy to go first. This is John Kreidler.
John?
Yes.
Okay. Can you just briefly tell us about yourself and why you're interested in serving on our city commission?
Sure. I'm a audio engineer. I moved to Marine City three years ago and I, I just have known the Vertons. I work at the theater and consult with them. So I've been happy to kind of get involved with just the running of the city and if there's any way I can help kind of move things along in a more progressive way, I'd like to help.
And what do you hope to accomplish as a member of the city commission?
Well, I, I think the city is well positioned to be a pretty, a major destination for people that don't want to travel all the way up to where, like Mackinac Island or somewhere farther, you know, to, to enjoy, you know, a quiet town and a place to, to visit. I think that could bring jobs into the community. I think that could, you know, give us an option to keep our kids, you know, give them an option to stay in town and, and work here and not have to travel so far. And I, I think there's a lot of potential. It's like the little Traverse City that nobody knows about, and I think we could really make that happen. So I'd like to be a part of that if I could be, you know.
Right. My last question for you, John, is how many city commission meetings have you attended in the last 12 months?
This is the second one.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody, any other city commissioners have questions for John Kreidler?
Yes, I guess I do. It's Lisa Hendrick.
Yes.
Okay, my two questions. Do you believe in open and transparent city government for the public if you served on the board?
Yes, I do.
And are quick, short meetings a good thing for the public? Or do you believe that meetings and agendas should be held for as long as it takes to conduct proper business?
Well, I think a reasonable amount of time should be given to conduct proper business. Yes.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Any other city commissioners have questions for John Kreidler?
Yes.
Yeah, Bill Claussen.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Bill.
I just, you've only been here three years?
Yes.
Okay, and that, you think you can be open to what's happening in town?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch all that. Open to, I didn't hear that last couple.
What the community needs and what is the best for the city.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I know, I know that's a, that's a difficult question. You can't, you can't obviously please everyone. I understand that, but I think that the best for is the most people is what we should try as, you know, to make our city as, as good as it can be for all of the residents and, and for those coming to visit.
The last question is, because you're in that kind of a business, do you think that you can help out with the Kmart mall area there? Any interest in that?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a difficult time, obviously, with retail floundering as it is compared to Amazon. You know, most people are getting into online shopping like never before because of all the pandemic. So it's, it's a double whammy for in-person shopping. Honestly, I think the parking situation that we face, you know, where we're always wondering where are we going to put people? Because when you fill the two theaters and you fill all the, all the restaurants, there's only like 85 parking spots on, on Water Street. And, you know, honestly, my, my thought would be, hey, make that a station where you can shuttle people in from that want to, that want to find a place to park. And, and, you know, maybe in the future, we kind of look toward that end of, of creating a, a way that we can bring in pedestrian traffic into them, into downtown, as well as support that area. Because if that's a, if that's a point where people are going to put their cars and leave them and then come and be in the city for other things, then for me, that's a, that's a pretty good use of that, that large parking area and, and those, those businesses then might have some potential. That's, you know, that's long-term, but those are the kind of things I think about.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other city commissioners have a question for John Kreidler?
Yes, Commissioner Callahan. Mr. Kreidler, based on your knowledge of Marine City, what do you feel the top prior, our top priority should be?
Well, you know, just as, from somebody who's moved from a township to the city, our taxes are high. That's a difficult thing. So I, I think we should maybe make it where we can make that money with volume and get more people coming to the city and maybe lower, be able to lower some of those rates. That would be a good start. I, I think making it a more, a destination city where we try to increase the foot traffic, if you will, in all the areas, you know, Broadway and Water Street, all the businesses need foot traffic, not, not drive-through traffic, you know? We don't, we only have a few drive-through restaurants and I, I think that's one of the, one of my goals would, would be to kind of see that. And I think, you know, just, just kind of getting more involvement of all of our community, you know, in these meetings and in this process would also be something I'd like to see.
I have one more.
Yes.
What do you perceive your responsibilities are as a city commissioner?
Just to offer suggestions and make decisions on policy and ideas that are put forth to the, to the commissioners. I don't have the charter. I, I need to get, get a copy of that and be, be clear on all of it. But that's, that's something I need to do is, is understand the city charter and what things we can do to work with that to make the city better.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I do have one more.
Okay.
What are a couple of things that you think we do not do well? I mean, you've talked that, you know, we, that we do some pretty cool things here in Marine City, but a couple of things that we don't do well here in Marine City. What do you think they are? And that, that you think we can change?
I, I think as far as the, the, you know, just the ability to go ahead and try new things, yeah, it's, it's hard for me to think of too many things. You know, I think we have a, we have a beautiful area that is, I mean, it's, it's great to, to enjoy it myself, but I think we don't sell it well. And that could bring in, you know, revenue for our business owners and, and the like. And I think, I, I think one of the things, Broadway being a, you know, where it kind of opens up into two lanes out on the west side of the city, I think it just encourages, it's like a passing zone, if you will, when you go up north. It turns into like a place where people try to race around the next car, you know, that was in front of them all the way up from Algonack or whatever. And, and I think that, that takes people, you know, that, that doesn't, that isn't good for the businesses. That makes, that makes it a place where, you know, we're getting through traffic, not to traffic to our city. So maybe, maybe a road, you know, diet there would be, would be appropriate to kind of, kind of like what St. Clair did, to kind of take away that big passing area and then, you know, instead of people speeding around other people in their town, at least they're, you know, now they can use the crosswalks without fear. So that kind of thing, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioners have any questions for John Kreidler? Okay, we're moving on. I just want to ask real quick, Ray Melli, are you with us? Okay, we're going to move on to Craig McKenzie. Craig, are you there?
Hello? Hello? Okay.
So who's saying hello? Is that Ray?
Ray. Ray Melli. I'm sorry, I had mute on. I couldn't, I missed out a lot of the, what was been said. Okay.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask Craig some questions and then we're going to come to you. You can hear us and everything correctly?
Now I can hear you. Thanks.
Okay, give it, okay, thank you. Just, I'm going to put you on hold for a second. Craig, you're with us?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I'm going to go right from the beginning. So tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on our city commission.
My name is Craig McKenzie. I am a school teacher currently working out of St. Clair. I am interested in working with the commission to make Marine City better. And there are many ideas on how, but I imagine there will be specific questions to that. But to be a liaison for this area of town. There's sections of town and not necessarily equal representation for each section.
And what do you hope to accomplish as a member of city commission?
Other than monitoring expenses, I would like to see, John said the same kind of thing, a more user-friendly city, but more than that, to exploit our waterfront areas to maybe reignite the idea of a municipal marina, not all unlike Lexington.
Okay, and how many city commission meetings have you attended in the last 12 months?
This is the second one.
Any other city commissioners have questions for Craig McKenzie?
Yeah, Bill Claussen.
Go ahead, Bill.
I, I get that's a weird question, but I want to know why you, why if you're interested, you didn't run at the election.
At the time, I was prepping for bowling, because I am the bowling coach for Marine City, but due to the COVID restrictions, that was canceled. I was actually inundated with quite a bit of work at the time. Now there's an opening and there was a need and a call for a need, so I decided to step up.
Bill, do you have any more questions?
And what would you do with the mall?
It would be great to see it turn into a recreation center where the kids could have something to do. Now, I realize that wouldn't necessarily help the tax base, but I don't imagine it would hurt it either, having a, a center in there that would draw families in, whether it be skee ball or an arcade or something like that.
Thank you.
Does anybody else, any other commissioner have questions for Craig McKenzie?
Lisa Hendrick, I figured we were all going to ask the same questions to all three? Correct?
No. Oh, you can, no, you can, you can ask whatever you want, Lisa.
Oh, I just figured it would only be fair if we asked the same questions to all three. All right, I'm just going to ask my same two questions. Craig, do you believe in open and transparent city government for the public if you served on the board?
Absolutely. Isn't that required by law?
Well, yes, but, you know, I just want to hear it from people because sometimes it doesn't happen that way. In our quick, short meetings, a good thing for the public? Or do you believe in the, that meeting agendas should be held for as long as it takes to conduct proper business?
As long as it takes to do the proper business. Is there a delay with, with the answer or is it, is it just me?
No, it's, you're coming, you're coming right up. On my end, you're coming right up. Any other city commissioners have questions for Craig McKenzie?
Yes, I do. Callahan. Mr. McKenzie, can you please elaborate a little bit for me on the equal representation of the different neighborhoods in our, in our town?
Well, each area, like out in Pontiac, there are zones or, I don't know if that's the right term, districts, districts. There are districts for each part of the town. So say you're isolated out by Bruce Street or in that area, there should be somebody that represents the folks over there that can communicate easily. So there's like a, like a hub for each person. It, it's really difficult for one person to have the ear of everybody in town, you know, where my neighbors might say stuff to me, they might not say stuff to somebody that's up on the north end of town.
All right, I'm going to ask you two. What do you think are some of the things that we do well here in Marine City?
We have become, I heard the word destination town. Even with the lack of the ferry, we have still maintained a repertoire with the people. The Fish Company has been bringing people in like crazy, Riviera, Little Bar, too. These restaurants continue to succeed somehow, even though times are bad. So we know how to take care of people. We know how to cater along with the theaters. We know how to cater and entertain, and that's a good thing, and that's what we need to continue.
Okay, cool. And then I, one more. Based on your knowledge of the, of Marine City, I mean, you've been here for a while. What do you feel our top priority should be?
I would like to see the waterfront actually become more accessible. And by that, I mean, similar to St. Clair or even Port Huron with the boardwalk that would extend the whole, the whole run. I'm down there quite a bit in the evenings fishing and I get to see a lot of different people come through that are visiting town. And sometimes there's spots where it's dark, some of the lights go out. And in this past year, the water levels being super high, it wasn't necessarily safe for some people to be down there. And that's, that's an issue, too. So I guess the big thing would be to keep it safe and exploit it more, along with, you know, bringing in more businesses for the foot traffic, as John said that before. The foot traffic, Broadway is definitely the next junction for this town as a, an arm for the people. And I believe he, he talked about parking. I'm not sure about shuttling people out, from out to in, more so we, we could have parking lots right off of Market Street, that first row heading east. I don't know if I answered the question or not.
All right, yes.
I apologize for that.
Thank you. I'm good.
Thank you, Commissioner Callahan. Any other commissioner have questions for Craig McKenzie? Okay, we're moving on to Mr. Melli, Ray Melli. Ray, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I'm going to start asking you some questions now.
Okay.
So Ray, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on our city commission.
Well, first of all, I was a city commissioner before. I do know a lot of the groundwork, what's involved in the metrics of being a city commissioner. Some of the things that you have to take in consideration as a city commissioner, you got to be able to think out of the box. And sometimes you have your opinions and you have to follow suit and you follow your procedures. But in, in regarding about following procedures, you can't be demanding on having everything your way. You have to be open-minded and also above all, you never want to hurt the city. When something has to be a unison vote for making, passing something to be passed, it don't hurt the city. When something has to be a, a unison vote for making a, passing something to be passed, it don't hurt the city any. You don't stand off and say, well, I'm going to prove a point. If I can't get my way, then no one's going to get their way. And a lot of things about being a city commissioner, you have to be open-minded. That's one of the biggest things. You have to see what is our values? What is drawing people into our community? You got to go for there. I believe in tourism and having the Titanic display. That's a big item that can really bring along in the city commission. I'm also a developer. I'm a license builder, handyman. I know a lot of metrics about building and know certain things that are up to code. And then too, I try to help out my neighbors. Uh, I feel like this is my community and as, as the community grows, we grow together and we strive and we become very successful. If we don't want to be in, if we're going to be individuals, nobody wins. And that's something that, uh, as being a commissioner beforehand, you learn through that. Uh, sometimes you feel like you're shorthanded. Uh, it takes four votes to get something passed. And you have to learn how to wait your turn and you have to understand, okay, what is the main value for the city? What do we need to have accomplished? What's going to make our city grow? And I feel like all our assets that we have, the waterfront, having, um, the, the theaters. I'm, I, I love theaters, okay? I'm a very avid, one-going. And I also love history. And there's so much history that's involved in Marine City. And the idea too is getting the community involved. There's so many different activities that people could get involved in, especially for the newbies. I'm personally, I'm a newbie in the sense, I've been here for a little better than, uh, 16 years now. And I still feel like I'm a newbie because I wasn't born and raised here. But in, in the process of doing that, there's so many activities, clubs and organization, you need to get the people involved. I'm not afraid to step out of the box. I wanted to have a radio station into Marine City for communication. And that's one of the biggest issues that we have to overcome is communication, because a lot of people don't know what's going on. And without communication, and, and, and there's certain things, I know how I can present different programs and I know how I can get my program across and not costing the city a great deal of money. Because that's the other issue. It's one thing to spend a lot of money. It's another thing to be very frugal and saving your pennies and getting the, the most of the bang out of your buck. It's just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm not, I thought you were done. Um, I have one more question, uh, well, I have two more questions. How many city commission meetings have you attended in the last 12 months?
Last 12 months? Uh, well, I wanted the, the last one and of course this one. I, I've been playing low-key. Uh, there's things that's going on in our community. And sometimes your voice, you need to listen. And instead of making rash judgments, you have to sit back and you go from there. But I'm willing to apply myself and I'm not afraid to get involved. I'm not just going to sit on the bench. If you want somebody to just sit on the bench and collect a paycheck, then get somebody else. I'm not interested. I want to contribute and I want to be involved. And if I can motivate the young people, our city will grow. If you can't motivate the young people, our city will die.
Thank you. And then my last question is, what do you hope to accomplish as a member of the city commission, which I kind of think you've already answered, but go ahead.
Well, for one thing, you got to have unity and you can't be afraid to express your point of view. If you see a problem and to be silent and you see a problem, shame on you. You got to be able to speak up and say, you know what? We're not doing this right. We're not very, very practical about this. We need to, uh, uh, look at it at a different angle, so just jumping into the frying pan. Uh, you have to be able to be, uh, business-minded. You have to be business sense. If you're buying something and purchasing something, uh, are we going to get the bang for our buck? Or are you just going to just purchase something and say, well, that's the going rate? I like, I don't mind doing my homework, investigating and helping out our community. Uh, so often people just sit back and they feel like, well, I'm not a chairperson, okay? Being the mayor. You got a lot on your shoulders. If things go wrong, it's going to fall on you. And I'm here to support you and I want to stand and work with you, but I'm not, I'm not going to, uh, fight you, you know what I'm saying? I will present my point of views about things and it's up for you to be in the chairperson to analyze it and say, hey, that's a pretty good thought. That's all, I feel like as a commissioner, what you're here for, you got to express yourself and, uh, being practical and what is good, what's good for the city. You know, I mean, it's nice that you want your own way, but if that's your own, your own way, how is the city going to value?
Thank you. Um, does anybody, uh, any other commissioners have, um, questions for, uh, Ray Melli?
Bill Claussen. Uh, Ray, I want to know, how come you didn't run for commissioner in the election?
Actually, I saw the, the commission staff that was running. I, I personally, I didn't want to rock the boat. I knew the new spot would be opening up. It's not like, if I would have ran for a commissioner, uh, the fourth man would have took in this spot right now. That's not how it works. Uh, there would have been, of course, a, a commission meeting. Somebody would have been eliminated and then, I'm not interested in eliminating anybody. Uh, I felt like I'm confident that our, our new mayor, um, is confident in doing the job and I want to be supportive. And, uh, the other commissioners, I didn't want to go against you. I, as, that's not my game. I don't, I don't want to play games just to say, oh, I beat you out one thing or another. Hey, elections are elections. Things work out and then they don't work out. But this opportunity is, uh, personally, you commissioners are able to vote and hopefully, I, I would love you to see the, put the right person in office that will best suit our city.
Thank you. Uh, Bill, do you have any more questions for, uh, Mr. Melli?
The same one as the mall out there. How do, how do we get, uh, that involved in, in part of the city and get it back, it growing again?
Well, one thing that losing the ferry damaged us really bad. And face it, um, getting the mall involved, there, there's got to be opportunities. You got to understand where we have, uh, uh, for tourism, the Titanic display, the theater. Usually you got to have a draw. It's one thing to have a, a business and one thing or another, but if you don't have a draw, you know, we're noted for antiques, okay? A lot of people just come to our town for antiques. And businesses draw other businesses. Um, no business is all on its own and thinking that they're going to make it. Especially in a small town. We need each other. Uh, businesses work hand in hand. You're not interested, if you want to tear down your brother, that you ain't going to grow. I mean, to put somebody down or put another business down, that, that tells you that your business isn't any good. And to me, if you promote your brother, you're going to promote the city.
Thank you. Uh, any other commissioners have, uh, questions for, uh, Ray Melli?
Yep, Lisa Hendrick, I'll ask my two. All right, Ray, these are kind of yes and no questions here. Do you believe in open and transparent city government for the public? And I sure think I know your answer.
Well, absolutely. When I was on the board, I, I felt like I was privileged because actually you know exactly what's going on when you're on the board. And sometimes, um, it's sad. Um, I want to tell everybody, you know, I mean, uh, knowing me, I definitely, um, like the people to know what's going on. I don't want surprises and say, oh my God, now what's going on? And having the people in confusion. But absolutely, um, we as a commissioners, you do have an unfair advantage because you have an inside scoop. And it's up to us if we want to promote it and saying, hey, this is what's happening. I expect this to happen in six months and expect this to happen in one year from now. It's up to us to broadcast our information to the public.
Thank you. Lisa, you're another question, you have the other question?
Yep, my second one. Um, Ray, are quick, short meetings a good thing for the public? Or do you believe that the meetings and agenda should be held as, for as long as it takes to conduct proper business?
Actually, when, there's an old saying, after 30 minutes, people start losing, uh, what's going on. Um, actually, shorter, get to the point, don't beat around the bush. Um, I used to love, um, uh, Dr. Green was, uh, was running for, with the school board. He was very efficient keeping the meeting short. And he had a good philosophy about that. When you keep the meeting short, people obtain more what went on and said, again, pushed by the wayside. But yeah, there are some issues that, uh, that might be a bigger, um, thing that, that people need to know and it's going to take time. And of course, you're going to have an extended meeting. It happens. What are you going to do? But I'd rather have the people informed and saying, well, at least we tried than to just shut up and not say nothing and just surprise the people.
Thank you. Uh, any other commissioner have questions for Ray Melli?
Yes. This is, uh, Commissioner Callahan. Uh, Mr. Melli, you already answered, uh, my one question when you were speaking earlier. But, um, I'm going to ask you, what do you feel our top priorities should be in the city?
Well, number one priority, um, I do want to see more communication. And back a while, when I was on the Tifa board, back in 09, I was pushing to have, uh, a short, uh, radio station. Uh, it would have been in 70 and that would have been communicating to the people. You could have been in your home. You could have been at the county line. Uh, you could have zoomed in. It's a short wave, uh, AM station where people need to know what's going on. And other towns, when you do something like that, and it's not very expensive. I've actually saved my paperwork back in 09. Uh, there was, um, where I had a good insight of what politics is all about. Where there was another board member that, uh, didn't want to see it happen and he was able to sway the board. But you know what? That's okay. Time passed, uh, different things have changed. Um, but the other idea was, the biggest thing was about my radio communication was because for the ferry, when the trucks were backed up in the ferry, I wanted to make it so the truck drivers wouldn't block up Main Water Street and, uh, have a free passageway. And I'll be honest with you, um, there's a lot of things in my mind, uh, things are not over. And some people say, well, the ferry's all done, Ray. It's, it's never going to happen again. But you know what? Sometimes you don't underestimate people. When progress comes into the city and, uh, tourism comes into the city, it's amazing how different things might just come back. And I, I strongly believe I have some angles that I would love to pursue. And I believe I can bring back the ferry. I have some ideas. I could kick it around the board. And I'm not afraid if somebody else dumps on it and sees it at a different angle and is able to get my, um, progress that I wanted to get accomplished, you can have the credit. I don't need the credit. I'd rather stay behind the scenes and knowing that my project went forward and the city got blessed.
Thank you. Uh, any other, um, questions? Uh, Wendy?
Nope, I'm good.
Any other commissioners have questions for, um, Mr. Melli? Okay, I'd like to thank all three of the candidates, John Kreidler, Craig McKenzie and Ray Melli. We certainly appreciate you, um, taking the time tonight to zoom in. Um, and now we need to make a decision. And I'd like to start by saying I'd like to make a motion to appoint, uh, John Kreidler as our, uh, next city commissioner.
Jake Bryson, support.
So we have a motion and a support, um, discussion?
Do we need to discuss? Do we do discussion? Chris?
We do. Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson. I'm sorry, Commissioner Ross is first. Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And now we, um, are moving to 9B board appointments. Let me get there. Hang on one second. Okay, Planning Commission, we have, uh, one vacancy and we have, um, one person, um, uh, Ben Heath. I'd like to, um, make a motion to nominate Ben Heath. Do I have to do these individually? I do. Do I? Yeah. Okay, sorry. I thought I could just do the whole thing because they're, um, so I'd like to nominate, uh, Ben Heath to Planning Commission.
Support for that? This is Brian Ross.
Okay, so I need a roll call vote?
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving down to Historical Commission, we have three vacancies, two people applied. I'd like to make a, a motion to approve these two candidates, William Butel and Suzanne Jenkins to Historical Commission.
This is Commissioner Callahan. I support that.
And I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving down to Zoning Board of Appeals, we have one vacancy and Mark Basham, um, applied. I'd like to make a motion to, um, nominate, uh, Mark Basham for, uh, zoning board.
Is Jake support?
Okay, I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and then we have a board of review. We have one vacancy and Dan Mykoff. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve Dan Mykoff for the board of review.
Before Bill Claussen.
So we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and we still have, um, just so everyone out there in, uh, Zoom land knows that we still have a vacancy for a resident member. If there are any residents that want to get involved in the Community and Economic Development Board, uh, we do have a vacancy. You need to come to the city offices and grab a, an application. And we also have two vacancies for the Tax Increment Financing Authority, which is Tifa. Um, and again, um, if you're interested, uh, come to the city offices and get an application. Okay? All right, moving on. Uh, city manager evaluation. Bob Data?
We provided information that I received from the attorney. He has a template that he shared with us that is a resolution based upon the village of Oxford, which he the village of Oxford, which he also is the attorney for. He, I think, is prepared to speak on this tonight.
Yeah, I'm right here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you for the opportunity. I, I have been around and exposed to clerk and management review processes for many, many years. And to say the least, you know, it is often a frustrating process. It, in my opinion, in many communities is a non-productive process. But you know, you start with the fundamentals that when you, when you look at your city manager, when you go through the hiring process of a city manager, you are, at that point, you're exercising your authority to hire the person who can carry out the basic duties of being a city manager, and that would be, you know, the management skills to run the departments, to run the office staff, and to run the basic issues associated with a city. You as a board, you as a commission, you are the policy setters for the community. In other words, when you're conducting your business, you are implementing and carrying out policies that you want to see moved forward, and you're introducing new policies to move forward. The implementation of your policies is, is accomplished through the city manager and through the, through the staff at the city offices. You're the policymaker, they're the policy implementers. And then you're the judge of whether or not the policies that you have desired have been properly implemented, not implemented, poorly implemented, or superbly implemented. And so over the years, I, I have been in favor of a, of a very action-based review process where you, you, at the end of the year, you set the goals and the milestones working with the individual. The individual has input as to what the, the city manager believes should be the 2021 goals and objectives for the city manager. You as a board, you as a commission have input as to what should be the goals and objectives of the city manager going forward. You reduce them to writing, and then the following year, you, you grade the report card. And maybe four out of the, the primary six issues got accomplished, so the other two move to the top, and you fill the bottom with four new ones. And over time, I have found in communities that when you, when you look back, when you look back at the review process, you have very measurable, very identified objectives that can be either checked off as done, not done, done well, done superbly, done poorly. And over time, you get a profile of your, of your city manager by doing it this way. But it, it requires, we, we did, we did four, we, we did three hours last night with, with my village manager, and we emerged with a, a twenty-one point, two thousand twenty-one goals and objectives that was really a blend between what the city, what the village manager believed should be done and what the board believed should be done. And then we spent another hour measuring last year's list. And, and I really think you guys deserve, and the city manager deserves a process where the goals and objectives are measurable, and you're not, you're not involved in some really elaborate point system or, or vague system that doesn't get us anywhere. And I, I know it's not an agenda item tonight, but I'm really, I'm really available to help you put a process like this in place. Because I, I mean, I went so far in the villages, I made it part of their charter, as you could, as you saw by the materials I submitted. And it creates a deadline in November, it creates a resolution process, the resolution is on file. Everybody knows the expectations, everybody knows how to measure it. We measure it the next year, and we see where we're at. And it's been very effective in four other communities that I've done it at as well. So it's just an idea. I'm not trying to butt into your process, I'm not trying to change your process. But I think if given the opportunity, we could put something very effective together, which would also benefit, it benefits not only the city manager, but I think it benefits the commissioners. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think that we really need to make a change on this and start the process. And I appreciate Attorney Davis for the work, and we're looking to make a change. And I think that the examples that you set forth are examples that we most certainly can implement here in Marine City, and we should implement in Marine City. So I look forward to the change. Anybody have any questions?
This is Jake. I guess my only question, I think this is a great thing. My question is, it, well, not, not so much a question, more of a statement is, I think we need to put a timeframe on this, else it's never going to get done. You know, it, weeks from now, four weeks from now, et cetera. But we need to have a timeframe to get this new system implemented. Else it will wind up in April or May or June, and it'll never happen.
I agree with you, Jake. So why don't, why don't we present at the next meeting a proposed resolution that lays this process out? So we'll have a resolution that you can look at that lays the process out, and, and it governs next November, it governs next December, and it governs exactly how we're going to do this.
You, you think that you can have something like that ready by January, for the first meeting in January?
The, the second, the second meeting in January.
Second meeting, January.
I have to go down and clean up P West because Elaine made a mess down there.
Oh, oh, I heard about that. No, um, yeah, that sounds fine, but it sounds good to me. Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, Lisa Hendrick. Bob, so how does, so you create this resolution, and then how do you handle, because things change with a, with job responsibilities throughout the year. I think things come up, different projects come up. How do you handle that within there?
Agreed. And then, and while that, that becomes, that becomes the burden on the city manager when, when you guys meet in November and you're looking down the list, and the city manager says, you know, we did not, we did not fully get done item three because we did this instead. And so it, it allows you, it allows for the dynamics. We had a lot of dynamics last night. And, and I agree with you, Lisa, a hundred percent. It's not, it's never, the, the road from A to B here is not going to be a straight line. But you want to have some general parameters, and you guys deserve, you guys deserve as a board for your city manager to be in full understanding what your expectations are.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Lisa.
Elaine, you have anything?
No, I'm good with that.
So, um, so I need, do I need to make a motion for this? Do I need to make a motion to do the proposed resolution?
No, 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 we'll just, we'll take action on it in the second meeting of January.
So we'll just, we'll just put it on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on to new business, wastewater treatment plant sampler. I make a motion to waive competitive bidding for this. And I need a roll call vote, please.
Did you want the city manager to explain it first?
Yes, Elaine.
That's okay. Mike unfortunately was not able to attend the meeting tonight, so I'll be covering for him. There is a issue with the Ross Ampler pump at the wastewater treatment plant that it's failing, and this is something that, with the state guidelines, we are required to have in place. This is on the affluent side, not the affluent side. So it monitors the, the material that's coming into the wastewater treatment plant. He did get some pricing for replacement units. The couple units that he has not recommended require some additional work to be able to make them functional for the space. So his recommendation is for the HESCO unit that really is an exact fit in the amount of six thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars.
So what, what you would need here is a, a, you, we need to waive the competitive bidding, and then we need to approve the purchase, correct?
Correct. And I think you already have a motion. I, I don't know if you had a second yet for that, Cheryl?
No, I did not. So I, I made the motion to waive competitive bidding prematurely, but I made the motion.
Okay.
Jacob, support?
Are we going to discuss it now?
This would be for waiving competitive bidding.
So first, we're going to do a roll call vote, then we discuss. Chris?
Commissioner Callahan?
Well, hang on a second. Procedurally, just so everyone's very clear, the only thing before you right now is whether or not to waive competitive bidding. We are, we are not discussing the substance of the cost or the product selected.
Okay.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we have a discussion.
Yeah, I, I'm, just the discussion I'm having with, with this one. I read his, his stuff, and he just had it fixed, and it's gone again. And I read these, these bid proposals, and they're all, all the bid proposals, except the one that he's asking for is upping the power. It's like running a, a home air conditioner in a, in a, outside air conditioner, it takes more power. So I'm wondering if it, if it, and I didn't get a chance to talk to Mike. I'm wondering if he upped the power to a greater motor on that like the other two were, that it would last longer. That's it.
I think aside from this bid and getting the, the, the HESCO unit or whatever one you choose to go with, that's certainly something that we can look at on a side note and make sure that there is sufficient power.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve, correct?
Yeah, a motion to, a motion to act on the purchase.
A motion to, to approve the purchase, correct, which we need tonight. Okay.
This is Jacob. I'm making a motion, we approve the purchase of the HESCO unit for six thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars.
This is Commissioner Callahan. I support.
Okay, we have a motion and support for the purchase of the HESCO unit for six thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars. And can I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
No.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to ten B, the bucket mount snow pusher. It's a pusher and accessories and, um, I need a motion.
Is I going to do a little summary, Cheryl?
Go ahead.
Okay, last year, Mike was able to borrow a ten-foot bucket mount snow pusher from the previous mayor and had great success with using it last year. And now he's looking to purchase one. We talked a little bit about moving forward with purchasing one after the good results from it last year. He was able to get three quotes. He's looking to purchase the Express Steel one in the amount of twenty-seven hundred and asking also for an additional six hundred for accessories, which brings the total amount to thirty-three hundred dollars is what he's looking for. One thing about this is that the current bucket that they have is, is much smaller, and it takes quite a bit of time to switch the heads on them. This unit has a quick-release connection, so it takes much less amount of time. And then also, they'll be able to clear out downtown a lot faster than what they're able to do with their existing equipment.
Is the bucket being proposed the same brand that Mayor Vandenbosch loaned to the city?
That I am unsure of. I need a, a motion to waive competitive bidding for this, too.
I mean, it had three bids.
Well, another thing in our charter is that it has to be sealed bids. So a lot of times, these companies, when you want to purchase something, they don't do sealed bids, but they'll provide a quote. So we always try to get at least three quotes.
This is Jake. I'm making a motion, we waive competitive bidding for the purchase of the bucket mount snow pusher.
Support, Bill Claussen.
And we have a motion and a support, and I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so that was the motion to waive competitive bid. Now I need, does anybody have any discussion on this? I mean, we kind of already discussed it, but anyone else? So now I need a motion to approve the purchase of the bucket mount snow pusher from Express Steel for twenty-seven hundred dollars plus six hundred dollars for accessories for a total of three thousand three hundred dollars.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion, we approve the purchase of the Express Steel snow pusher and accessory, accessories for a total amount of three thousand three hundred dollars.
Support, Bill Claussen.
Okay, I've got a motion and support. I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on for the agreement for the St. Clair County Designated Assessor. Elaine?
This is an interlocal agreement between St. Clair County and the city. This is something that through the State Public Act six sixty of twenty eighteen, each county is required to have a designated assessor on file. This is something that is required by the state. It's not something that we have to do locally. This does require approval by the county, which they have already approved it, and a majority of the local government units. It is a five-year agreement, and I would believe that probably every five years after this, it will be up for renewal.
Okay, I need a motion to, go ahead.
Agreement has, agreement has been reviewed and approved by legal counsel.
Okay.
I have a question, Lisa Hendrick here. I see all these fee structures and reappraisal costs. Is all that going to be added in for us?
That would only be if we get in a situation where we actually have to tap into and utilize the designated assessor. There is a little bit of a description in that in the materials that you have before you.
Lisa, we probably won't, we probably won't use this, but we have to have it on file to satisfy the state law.
Okay.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the interlocal agreement for the St. Clair County, uh, Designated Assessor for the period of January 1, 2000, or 2021 through December 31st, 2025, uh, with the State Tax Commission. I need a motion.
So moved, Lisa Hendrick.
Bill Clausen.
Okay, I've got a motion and support. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to, uh, 10D, the Metro Act Agreement. Um, Elaine?
This is an agreement with Crown Castle through the Metro Act. And what they're doing is they're looking to expand their, uh, fiber optic technologies in the city. And, uh, this doesn't necessarily have to have come to City Commission. Uh, but because it is a contract, I feel that in our charter, the contracts are required to come to you and it would be appropriate thing to do.
Okay, I need a motion to approve, um, Crown Castle, uh, for the continuing service of the existing service, uh, for the fiber optics in Marine City.
This is Jake. So moved.
Support Bill Clausen.
Okay, I've got a motion and support for the, um, Metro Act Agreement, and I need a roll call vote, please.
Um, wait, wait, question, questions?
Um, I see there's a map on here that's marked confidential.
Yep.
And? So should that have been in here or not?
It should have been in the commissioner package.
But it shouldn't be online, correct?
Correct.
All right, just making a point there with that particular item.
Yeah, the reason being is that proprietary information for the service providers and as commissioners, it's, uh, I, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong here, Bob, but privileged information.
Yeah, the commissioners are allowed to see it so they can make an informed vote, but it shouldn't go any further than that.
That's the point.
Got it.
Okay, I need a, um, motion to approve the Metro Act Agreement.
We have the motion. We just need a roll call vote.
We have the motion. Do we have a second? And roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to 10E, the Resolution, um, number 013-2020 for the temporary allowance of to-go alcohol cups in downtown parks. Elaine?
I did receive a, um, request for the city to consider allowing alcohol consumption either through some type of social district, which the state now allows for, um, or some other option to where we'd be able to allow something during this COVID pandemic. Uh, the city manager of St. Clair was gracious enough to share a resolution that they passed up in St. Clair that allowed for a temporary exemption from the allowance of, or I'm sorry, the, uh, pro- prohibition of alcohol in the parks. And, uh, we kind of car- carbon copied off of that, though unfortunately forgot to change the references for the code. Uh, the section is actually 9307. And then, um, in the third whereas, it's 9310. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Uh, the times and the timeframe for it are something that I think that you would need to pay particular attention to and determine how long you want to do this. The Public Act at the state level has a sunset, so it, it expires December 31st, 2025. Uh, I would recommend that we either do this through the end of next year or we can do it as long as we are in the state of the national emergency for the pandemic. Uh, I think that the hours that St. Clair had are probably something that would work well in Marine City. But beyond that, any discussion and potentially changing those dates and times would be up to commission.
Yeah, I agree too that it, um, that December 31st, 2025 is a tad bit long. Um, I think that if we just keep it, um, effective, uh, to expire the end of 2021, that would be gr- or, or until the national emergency expires, one or the other. I think that would be a suitable timeframe.
I'd, I'd agree on that.
We could put language in. We, we could put language in there that it would be one or the other, whichever occurs first.
Whichever occurs first, right?
I'd recommend doing a finite time rather than when the, when the national emergency ends because make it align with a commission meeting such that if we need to extend it, we can. Instead of having some period of limbo. Potential period of.
Can I ask a question on that? On this, on this size and stuff and being printed, for if you were at, uh, say Anita's and then you got a cup from them and you had your lemon and they kicked you out and you go somewhere else and they're served. And then the police get them out in the park and they've got, um, one, the, the one cup from the little bar. Now, who, who gets charged for the alcohol? Over serving?
You mean, Bill, you mean under the, under the concept of, uh, like a dram shop claim?
Yeah.
I think that's separate.
Those become fact dependent. Those become, uh, fact, you know, they, when you have a dram shop claim, um, as Cheryl might know, they become fact dependent, uh, uh, upon the, uh, the incident. So if, you know, somebody gets hurt or there's an incident, the fact analysis will figure out where they were and how many were served. So the blame isn't gonna be rise and fall with what name is on the cup. The, the liability's gonna rise and fall with the fact analysis.
Then, then it gets investigated, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, like, like, I mean, like, you know, like Cheryl could probably tell you and I, I mean, just because somebody has their last drink at the, at the little bar, doesn't mean the little bar's gonna be the liable party.
Well, I, I, I really don't like this, uh, open liquor, so that, that's all I have to say.
Well, but it, it's not open. It's completely sealed. You know, you're just really allowing somebody and, I mean, come on, it's winter time. I don't know that there's actually too many people there, you know, wandering our parks, uh, uh, it's not open carry. It's just, it's you really getting a cocktail and like a coffee cocktail and going down to the water for 15, 20 minutes. Um, that's how I see it. I'm sorry?
I said it's open if you're drinking it.
No, it's sealed. You have to, you're drinking out of a straw. It's sealed. You can't, it's, it's a sealed cup when it leaves the facility.
Yeah, and one, one of the purposes here is to promote and give business because, you know, right now you can't, you can't go inside and sit down and have a drink.
Right.
That whole, that whole social aspect has been cut off from us. Um, and this provides a social outlet for people to still drink a little bit in public and, and do it in a safe and responsible manner, hopefully. Bill, this does not, this does not take away the concept of being drunk and disorderly in the public. You know, this isn't, this is, this isn't a free ticket to, to being openly intoxicated and disorderly. This is, that is not what's going on here.
Okay, well, I ran the festival for a number of years and the beer tent and, uh, people can get nuts.
I, 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 I agree with you.
Think festival's a little different story, but point taken.
Okay, um, I need, uh, any more discussion on this?
I'm trying to get my question in here. Um, my concern is, cause this is gonna go into summertime probably, um, the beach. This includes the beach with all the kids. I don't have a problem with the regular parks, but I think that should be not in here.
You can include that in the resolution as an exemption.
This says any park adjacent to South Water Street, which is the beach.
Well, just, just exempt it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'd like to see that, the beach, just the beach, not the pavilion, but the beach. Um, knocked out of there.
The actual physical beach, right?
Yeah, where all the kids go.
Yeah. It's fine.
I would support that.
Yeah.
This is Commissioner Ross.
Okay. So then we need, um, uh, motion to approve the Resolution 013-2020, Temporary Allowance of the To-Go Alcohol Cups in Downtown Parks effect, or at, uh, ending, uh, at the end of 2021 and excluding the Marine City Public Beach, right?
Did, did you also want that to be, um, when the pandemic is over or the end of the year, whichever occurs first?
I.
Uh, I would, I would go with the, I would go with the date certainty. When the pandemic over, is over is, is a little bit vague, in my opinion.
Yes, I agree.
Commissioner Ross.
We can always, we can always extend it. Let's hope, let's hope we never do, but let's, you know, we can always extend it. Okay?
I would make the recommendation, this is Commissioner Ross, to, uh, end it at the first scheduled commission meeting for 2022.
Okay.
Such that if we needed to amend it or extend it, it was possible. It would be possible.
All right, I, we got them, we got a motion on the board and we need a, a second.
This is Jake. I support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Um, can I just run this by one more time, the board? So we're going to make the resolution ending the first scheduled City Commission meeting for 2022 and we're excluding the Marine City Public Beach? Is that how you wanted it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And correcting the, uh, typographic errors that were carried over from the Marine, uh, rather the St. Clair verbiage.
Got those.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Hendrick.
That date for the January meeting would be January 6th, 2022.
January 6th, okay.
Seems like a long way away, doesn't it?
Oh, God.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, good, good. Uh, let's moving on to 10F, the revolution, res- revolution. The Resolution Number 014-2020, Kayak Launch Grant. Elaine?
So I have some interesting developments on the kayak launch. So this grant is something that is done through the state and it's a federal grant. It's something that we would have to submit and it would, it's due actually tomorrow, so I would get it out tonight if it was approved. Uh, they would not announce and release the grant funds until October of 2021. And that would put us at a build-out date of probably March 2022. Uh, we recently received notice from the St. Clair County Planning Commission, I'm sorry, Parks and Recreation Commission, that they approved a request to fund up to $30,000 of the canoe and kayak launch. And that is something that we would be able to start moving forward on this immediately. Or actually, I guess, weather permitting, so probably would be, uh, March that we'd be able to start doing construction on the site. So I, I would leave it up to you if you determine if you want to move forward with this kayak launch application or if you just want to move forward with the kayak launch with the funds that will be provided from the county.
Um, I think that we should, uh, move forward with this project. We have been talking about this for a long time. Um, and we are, uh, completely approved by St. Clair County Parks and Rec for $30,000. Uh, if we decided to, uh, wait and try to go for a grant, I mean, what happens if, you know, come October 2021, uh, we, um, uh, uh, apply for a grant and we don't get it? If we don't get it, then we're back at square one. We have no money. Uh, we've lost the money from the county. Um, and the county is really, St. Clair County is really trying with the Blue Ways, um, and, uh, different, uh, projects. They're really trying to improve our waterways, improve our bike paths, uh, get people outside. And $30,000 is nothing to shake a stick at, um, nothing to shake a kayak paddle at. So I, um, I think that, uh, in my opinion, we need to, uh, move forward and, um, get this project started. It's a beautiful project. Anyone else?
Did we get all our approvals in DNR?
Everything's done as far as I know.
Um, I got a whole lot of questions.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, first off, I'm, I'm totally for this project, but I got some questions and concerns about the location again. Um, I know letters were sent out to the, the people in that area. Um, they aren't real receptive, even though they are kayak users. Um, so here's some of the things. One of the issues is that we're, there is an alternate location at the end of East St. Clair Street. And one of the things with putting it where we're putting it at the bridge is now we've just eliminated the majority of our transient dock boating. Um, so now you've eliminated all that, which would took us a long time to get that in there. And, um, then the other lot is very large. You could still do it. A lot of the people don't like the fact with the seawall. And I'm concerned in how we're gonna get this thing in and out every year versus over on the other lot that has no seawall where you could drag this out. You have plenty of room for parking. It's still close to downtown where people can walk. Um, I mean, we need to make sure that, um, that we deal with people in these neighborhoods and stuff too, when we do it. I mean, they were sent a letter, but, uh, some of them told me that they're just not for this particular location. So I was wondering if we could still look at both locations just to see if the other one is more conducive to it so that we keep our transient boating and we also can have the kayak launch.
Elaine, do you know, did we receive any, um, uh, any letters or phone calls from the, uh, the, the couple of residents that are in that area that, that voiced concern about the location?
I personally have not.
Um, I talked, I talked to Tom and Sherry Fosher who, uh, and they said they also talked to their neighbors and they, they weren't in agreement with this.
Okay.
So I'm just, I'm just looking, I, I realize you can't make everybody happy, but I also think that we're not utilizing that other lot, which is also another good location.
This has been, this has been talked about for a long time. And as far as like transient docking, um, we do have a lot of transient docking, uh, on, a lot of, a lot of boats can't get under the bridge. Uh, and the ones that I see using the little area that we have for, um, transient docking are on the south side of the bridge. The only thing that I ever, I've ever seen, and I go by this a million times, uh, in the summertime, plus I have a boat there, um, is I see people fishing and I, I honestly cannot recall seeing one boat tied up there. It's always on, uh, nor, it's on the south side, sorry, the south side. So I don't think that we're, and plus, you know what? We got, uh, um, uh, Bill Rose is, uh, putting in a marina. He's doing some transient docking down at his marina site. Um, I think that in the future, we're gonna see, um, plenty of, uh, room for people that's coming. I mean, we, we wanna see a marina come in. We want people to come in by boat. So, and we certainly want people to, and, and I think that leaving it in the location that it's in, wha- y- y- you see it. It's so visible for everybody. You come over that beautiful bridge and that's what you see. You see this wonderful kayak area with some kayaks and some easy accessibility and, and we can drag it in and out because there's a spot at the end of the, the cement abutment that is, uh, completely open. There's no, there's no seawall there. You can just drag it up on the, on the grass. So I think it's, I think it's a great location and, um, I, I think that we should not wait to try to get any kind of a, a grant for October twenty twenty-one.
Well, I'm not disagreeing that, to go with the grant. All I'm saying is the East St. Clair Street was the first spot we talked about when we, this came up because I was on the board at the time. So this isn't anything new.
How long ago was that? I'm, I'm just asking, how long ago was that?
Before you were on the EDA, I was on the EDA and that's where this came up. This is where they first looked to put it.
I'm, I'm just asking. I don't know how long ago that was. Five years, ten years?
Probably two years ago.
Oh, two years, okay.
So this, this was where the original intent was to put it was there.
But nobody, nobody, um,
Well, the board changed it to the bridge.
I think it's for, I think it's visibility. Honestly, I really think it's visibility, you know? I mean, it's, y- y- you barely even have to advertise it because everybody and their brother comes over that bridge. We only have two bridges that go to downtown, so. I understand what you're saying, though. Anybody else?
I just wanted to let you know the requirements from the county, uh, they're, they're pretty minimal, just that we provide the, the site and a safe route to the launch. Uh, an ADA accessible route to the launch by the second year, which, it, with the plans, we would do that in the first year. That we have to maintain the launch in good condition during its useful life and we have to clean it regularly. Remove it from the water in November and secure the launch during the winter to make sure that it's safe from high water. Reinstall the launch after spring floods and ice flow. Provide free access to the launch. Provide liability and property damage insurance for the launch. And provide a launch sign recognizing St. Clair County Parks and Recreation millage contribution and the statement that the launch is open to everyone and recognition of the access to recreation program.
Good. Anyone else?
St. Clair, St. Clair County will provide the dock and the ADA adaptive devices. They'll also promote the use of the launch for us and provide technical upgrades to the launch as needed.
Good. Anyone else? Okay, I need a motion, um, to approve resolution zero one four dash two zero two zero, the kayak launch grant. Um, moving forward with the, uh, Parks and Rec, the St. Clair County, um, already approved Parks and Rec, um, uh, amount of thirty thousand dollars.
We, we actually wouldn't need an approval of this resolution. Uh, we would just need really an approval to move forward with the, the plan as submitted and utilize the funding from St. Clair County.
Okay, what she said for, um, I need a motion to approve.
This is Jake. I'll make a motion. We approve the plan as submitted utilizing the funds from St. Clair County.
Support Bill Claussen.
And we have a motion and support. I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Um, I'm going to vote no and I want it noted in the minutes that I'm totally for this project, but I'm against the location.
Motion carries.
Okay, and now we're moving on to, uh, ten G, which is the ice rink, uh, relocation. It, Laura, are you on the phone?
I am here.
Okay, you want us to talk about this a little bit?
Sure, um, so.
Laura Scotts.
Yep, four thirty, South Water Street. Um, a couple of years ago, or I should say last year, we were able to, um, secure funding to purchase the ice rink. Um, last year we, we were, uh, we put it, we installed it in Nautical Mile Park, which was okay, but not necessarily the perfect location. Um, we've met the, the chamber, um, our maritime Christmas committee has met and talked a little bit and thought that it would be best to bring it to three hundred Broadway. Um, the idea behind that is that we would like to do some type of, uh, winter carnival, um, in February and hopefully, um, help promote some of the restaurants and businesses through this, um, pandemic. Um, and we feel that that location, um, would serve the community much better, um, than Nautical Mile Park. Uh, we're hoping to reach out to the community this way. Nautical Mile Park was great, but at the same time, it's, it's kind of off the beaten path. Three hundred Broadway is centralized and very visible, um, you know, from, from traffic that goes by. So we are asking, um, the commission to allow us, um, and, and DPW, because I've talked to Mike about this, um, but it is your decision to allow us to move it to three hundred Broadway. Um, you know, we would like to light it up eventually, but we, we would like to make this kind of a centralized winter town square. Um, so that is what, you know, we are hoping for tonight.
Hey, Laura.
Go ahead.
Hi Laura, this is Lisa Hendrick. Listen, I appreciate this because when Gary first brought this up, I asked for it to be put behind three hundred Broadway in that, in one of those areas.
You did.
Of course, they told me it couldn't be done, but I'm glad that you convinced them that it can be done because this is the better location for everyone.
I agree. And I was going to bring that up to you because Lisa, this is what you did suggest and I do think it is the right place for it.
Um, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think it will bring, I, I just think it will reach the community more, um,
Yeah.
opposed to the business community, but I think we all work together. And I said it, I think it's that way of kind of, you know, bridging the two gaps, so.
Yep, well, I'll make that motion that we move it to three hundred Broadway.
Support Bill Claussen.
So we have a motion and support. One of the things that I wanted to say too is that, you know, I, uh, walked out there, uh, uh, today. We had a little meeting about some other stuff and, um, there's also, i- i- I think it would just be such a beautiful backdrop. And even if we, we haven't like, you know, finalized the precise location, but if we could like wedge it somehow into that like northeast corner area, you know, so that you can see it going down Main Street. You can see it from Broadway, um, instead of tucking it like behind the building. But, um, you know, uh, there, I know that there's some concern about the lights with the, uh, some of the residents and stuff, but, you know, we don't have to have lights that point up. We can have them point straight down into the, onto the, um, onto the ice and, you know, have them go off at nine o'clock at night or eight o'clock at night or whatever. But, um, I just think that it's going to be, um, a great project and, and a start of making, um, three hundred Broadway usable, more usable. And, you know, we're talking about doing more lighting on the trees and all that kind of stuff, making it into like that winter carnival that extends for hopefully, when we get a winner, months and months and months. So, um, we have a motion and we have a second and I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
Before we move on to the next topic, I was wondering if I could ask, this is Commissioner Ross. Uh, it, would it be possible to put some signage up for the ice skating rink?
Yeah, so we are going to, we want to make this an opportunity for also businesses to remote themselves. Um, we are, we have, um, already, uh, people that have donated I, over a thousand dollars to light, um, you know, to light the rink, which is awesome. So yeah, any input you want to give us, we, we are more than happy to hear. So let me know what your thoughts are.
Sure.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Okay, moving on to, uh, eleven, which we're good, doing items removed the, from the consent agenda, which brings us back to H and I. Which is the City Marine City Retirement System. We want to talk about that?
All right, the reason why I moved this, uh, this is Lisa Hendrick, the reason why I moved this, um, if you take a look at the one targeted as seven H, and you go to page nineteen.
Right.
All right, so this is the concern I have is that this thing has just been not getting anywhere and we're getting deeper into a issue here that it looks like, um, on item four, under employer contributions for fiscal year, we're going to be dealing with a four hundred and four thousand dollar, um, investment in here. And I also looked at the other section, I don't know if it's page five in the other part, that we're dropping, um, for being funded in the pension fund from sixty-four to sixty. I mean, we used to be up in the eighties. And this thing is really dropping down and this is serious business for this city because if we get too far down, I don't want to be like Port Huron where they've had to borrow money to prop up their pension fund. So I just want to make everybody aware of this, that this is a serious thing and it will be, I'm sure, coming up at budget time. But I think we've missed a beat the last few years in not contributing enough money.
Uh, I think that we, uh, Elaine, do we talk to, um, Megan about this?
Megan has been working with NiHart quite a bit on this and also our auditor. And she is well aware of this and will be working on a plan of action. I don't think that it's a long-term bubble that we're looking at from discussions with her, but it is definitely going to be a couple of tough years working with that.
Yes, well, I'm, this, this is just to point out to the commission. I know we have some new people, but this is, this is a big issue for any community, these pension funds. So just pay attention to that one and I'm sure, like I said, we'll have a lot more discussion. But the other, the other, um, seven I, if you look on page five, that gives you the percentages, how far we've dropped down and that's not a good thing. And that's all, that, that was all my point was for this issue.
Well, this is Bill Claussen and I, you know, I was in the city for a long time and it's always been underfunded. They've always talked about it being underfunded.
Yeah, but we've never been underfunded this bad.
Well, they have to look, get funding it.
Yeah, they've, they've changed some of the rules for how the actuarial is done and then they've also changed the percentages because the interest that we were earning really wasn't materializing from what they've had in some of the more recent ones. So that's a couple of the reasons why there is such a dramatic change this time. And those changes will be carrying through in the future.
Anybody else? Okay, um, moving on to city manager's report.
Uh, no, these, these items still have to get approved.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the consent agenda items, H and I, eleven H and I.
Support Bill Claussen.
We have a motion and support. A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, um, commissioner, or I'm sorry, the city manager's report, Elaine?
Uh, since my report, I've attended the EDA meeting and the webinar regarding legal, legal impuls- implications of the vaccine. Uh, watched quite a few more contractors through the site at two sixty South Parker. Bids are due on the twenty-eighth and, and I'm hopeful that we're going to get some good prices for that. Uh, I've been contacted or contacting the building official about the home at two oh nine West that had the fire. And there were supposed to be building materials on site the second week of December, according to what he was told. That has not happened, so at this point, we are likely going to be, uh, proceeding to get quotes for demolition and have that on the agenda in January unless things change. Uh, the building official did find something that if he had to, he has the ability to revoke the building permit that has been issued.
Any questions for city manager?
Um, I have two. Um, Lisa Hendrick, um, will we be putting the issue of the city office cameras on the agenda for discussion soon?
Lisa, what?
Uh, I'm sorry. The city office cameras.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay.
You talked about it some time ago.
Yeah, I, I, I spoke with Bob about that. I, I don't know if Bob, if he want to respond to that right now.
Well, here's, here's, with, with respect, I, I, I would rather this be an agenda item, but I'm going to tell you, uh, preliminary, uh, and I think what will be a final opinion is, I think we can do, um, we will do the cameras and we will do them, um, for the, you know, video, but I am going to caution you against audio.
Oh, we should never do audio. Are you kidding me? That's, that's.
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, I, I know some people who have done it and they've gotten themselves into big trouble because when you're, when you're in a pub, when you're in a public building, your expectation of the fact that you're there, your, your expectation of privacy with respect to your presence is waived, I think implicitly by the fact that you went in the building. Um, however, you're, you know, the, you don't really waive the con- or, or your, your conversation. You know, I don't think because you're in a building, you're waiving the right that, you know, that you're, you're going to be recorded. Um, so I'm going to be in favor of the, of the cameras to the, to the extent they pick up the visual, uh, pictures. But I'm going to tell you that I'm going to be against legally picking up conversations.
I'm against it too.
Well, it's definitely to be addressed by the entire board.
No, I understand.
I, I don't know of any location. I don't know. I, let me tell you, I, I used to design security systems. I don't know any location that has had audio. That, that's like an invasion of privacy in my, in my, uh, opinion.
Well, the discussion isn't just over the audio, so that's why I'm asking.
Well, I'm totally for cameras, absolute, hundred percent, hundred percent. We, that's.
Yeah, we already have the cameras in place. That was something we had to immediately do and the cameras will be over at the new office as well.
Okay, well, what about, what about in the PD? There was talk of that too?
Yeah, I, I've talked to Jim about that and, uh, he needs to get pricing for it.
We need cameras in all of our city buildings, including the fire station, everywhere. We need to, yeah, we were, Elaine and I were discussing that, uh, a while ago.
Well, that's why I'm asking when it's going to be on the agenda so it can be discussed.
We can put it on the agenda for, um, January.
Okay.
Perfect.
Um, the other question is, um, I'm still waiting on information on the junkyard. We're getting a lot of complaints on this issue. So will you be having something for me soon?
The building official is working on it with them and more than likely, it's probably going to be turned over to legal.
What complaints are we getting for the junk, what junkyard? The one that's on West and, um,
On King, on King Road up by twenty-six mile.
Right. What's the complaint?
Uh, they've got a lot of cars that are parked on the lot, um, I don't know.
The previous owner was not allowed to operate. And, um, he passed away and now we've got it worse than ever. So there was rulings at the time that needed to be looked at. That's why I'm asking. And there's a lot of people.
Not going to touch the fence? There's no fence there? Are they beyond the fence line? I'm just asking.
Yeah, they're, they're outside of the fence line and they have quite a few vehicles heavily stacked in there to where you can't even open a door for most of them.
Hmm, okay.
Uh, this is Bill Claussen. Uh, can I speak on that? Hello?
Go ahead, Bill. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was a building inspector at the time in Marine City when we took them to court and there. and there is a court order on that junkyard that there's to be no vehicle outside the fence that can be run on the road.
Okay. Well, we'll look into that.
It means headlights, turn indicators, all that stuff.
That'd be, there's no vehicle permitted beyond the fence line that cannot run on the road or can?
Be legal on the road. That lights, turn indicators, everything is legal, slated.
Oh, right.
Gotcha, so they can park there a, a normal road-going vehicle or one that's for sale perhaps, but not, yeah. Okay, thank you, thank you for the clarification.
The judge said if you took it off, you went there to look at a vehicle, you went and got a key and you could drive it off on the road legally, then it was, then it was, could be out front. Other than with all other vehicles, we're behind the fence. Look that up.
Okay. Elaine, were you all done with your, um, manager's report?
Um, pretty much, yeah. Uh, just wanted to remind everyone that we're still in this partial shutdown through December 20th. I anticipate that the governor is probably going to make some announcements within the next couple of days regarding that. Um, certainly wish we could get back to business, but the numbers unfortunately are not looking very good. And then also just want to wish everyone a happy holidays coming up. I know we've got, uh, Christmas and New Years and hopefully people will be able to at least spend it in a nice, quiet way.
Thank you. Uh, we're moving on to, um, commissioner privilege and liaison reports. Um, I'm going to go alphabetically, so, um, Commissioner Bryson, do you have anything for us?
Uh, nothing except, uh, have a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hendrick?
Um, two quick things. Um, I'm requesting that all my comments, questions with answers and concerns be documented to these minutes, except the interview for commissioner. Um, and other than that, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe New Year.
Thank you. Commissioner Callahan?
Um, yes, I just want to, I want to, um, thank and congratulate, uh, the Marine City Area Chamber of Commerce for, uh, the work that they've done, uh, or that they did on the maritime days. I know there was, uh, we were, we tossed around quite a bit whether we were going to cancel it or not and, uh, we decided to, you know, just modify it and make it happen. And I think it was very successful and very well received. So thank you for all your work on that, everyone. And other than that, I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays and be safe and stay healthy.
Thank you. Commissioner Clausen?
Yes, I want to wish everybody the, uh, holidays, um, Christmas, everybody, uh, take care of themselves, wear masks. We clarify that, um, I just think it's going to be an, uh, uh, an enforcement problem with the drinking, but that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Ross?
Thanks. Uh, yeah, just for the previous topic, Bill, I just wanted to let you know, all I wanted was clarity on that to make sure that that made sense and it does. So thanks for the clarity. I'm all set, no need to, uh, look it up. Uh, other than that, yeah, everybody just try to relax over the holiday if that's at all possible. And yeah, same, same, stay safe, stay healthy. My wife is a physician and, uh, yeah, we are doing our best to protect ourselves and protect those around us.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say that, um, uh, we talked, uh, a couple of times today about communication and how important it is for our community and our residents. And I want to let everybody know that I'm going to be going on Channel Six with Paul Dingeman, um, starting in January. I'm going to do a monthly, I don't want to call it a show. It's going to be more like, I'm calling it the Mayor Minute and, um, we're going to be talking about various topics, uh, letting people know what's going on in the community to really try to keep communication, um, up. The very first topic that I'm going to talk about in January is volunteerism and how important it is, uh, to our community as a whole to get involved, whether it be city government, uh, locally in the schools, uh, your church, whatever organization that you want to get into, um, volunteerism is very important. Um, and, um, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And that is it. Um, motion to adjourn.
Support from Commissioner Ross.
Do I need a roll call vote?
Yes, we do, Mayor Verkaman.
Sorry, roll call vote.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Motion carries. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas, thank you. Stay safe, bye.